Okay, you're all set.
Okay, all right, thank you, Melody. Okay, good evening Mohopack community. It is May 25th, 2021, and this is a special meeting of the school board to go over some of the, get a bond update. So what I'd like to do right now is make a motion to open the meeting, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Adam. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it's one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, school board, and hello to, again, our Mohopack community and our assistant superintendent, superintendent of schools. I'm not going to belige you to the point. We're going to turn it right over and get this evening started. So I'd like to introduce our superintendent of schools, Ms. Anthony DiCarlo, and he will begin the process of the evening. Anthony, take us away.
Thank you very much, President Mangan. As you know and mentioned last week, you know, we have really begun to start our project, our bond up at the high school, and tonight we have an overview of where we're at currently and where we're headed. So I'm going to turn it over to Sandra Closte, our assistant superintendent for business, who'll introduce Mr. Lou Paloma with an update. Sandra?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. So we are along with Phase One of our capital project, and we would like to give you an update of where we are and where we'll be going as we move forward with the summer plans. So I will introduce Mr. Lou Rodriguez. He is our construction manager, and he heads up the project from the construction site. So please, Lou, when you are ready. You are on mute.
Hey, guys. Yeah, I apologize. So I've been trying to get on with my laptop, and I can't do it. So I'm on with my phone, so.
Lou, will you just, do you want to share the presentation, or is it better for you to speak to it? Because I don't know if you can see it, and then I don't know how we follow along.
I could, well, if you can put it up, I can definitely talk to it if you put it up.
You've got it. Give me one second, because of course I know it's here, and get to it. Nope, there's the NCAA for everyone. There we go. All right. So it's a power, not a PowerPoint, so I'll be going through it as a PDF. Sorry, it'll take a couple of switches to move through. Can you see it, Lou?
Yep, I sure can. Yeah, so you go to the next page. Yep.
Okay, this is the early package update?
Yep. So the early package update, basically, we're in a good position. If everyone remembers, we awarded $6.2 million worth of work. We were under budget right now. When you look at all the contracts, we are closed on all of them. And the only thing on, when you look at the mechanical contract, J&amp;M, we just final closeout paperwork that's normal with an HVAC company. But we're very close to making final payments there. So we're in a very good position. We're under budget and, you know, happy to be where we are with all those contracts. So again, 6.2 million. We were originally thinking we were going to be at over $7 million worth of work on the first phase. So good, we're in a good position, and yeah, early package is closed. Yep.
Thank you. And for the board and for the public, once we do those final closeout documents and we're able to finalize the paperwork, and we do the final paperwork for the state, we will share with you the final costs on each one of those projects. Moving into Phase One.
Yep. So Phase One, this is just an overview of the contracts, the contractors that were awarded work. General Construction Contract, Piazza, their contract is $3.797 million. The plumbing contract is SNL Construction. They're at three point, actually, I'm sorry, Piazza was at 3.39 million. SNL is at 1.369 million. Mechanical Contractor, MDS, is at 2.8 million. The electrical contract, Fanshawe, is at 1.289. The abatement contractor, all under, all within budget, 320,000. The casework contract Tri-State is at 806,000. Landscapes, LUI, is at 3.797. ATURF came in at 1.1 million, right within our budget. Right now, overall, we're looking at $15.2 million worth of work, and we are under budget by about $1.4 million. And this is, I'm just restating what's been talked about previously, but these are all the awarded contracts. So this is just talking about the steps. Noticeive award went out, contracts are in place, submittals, all the contracts, all the contractors are pushing the submittal process. In particular, I do want to say that the submittal process in regards to the GC has been, it's a bit of a struggle. I think that what's happening right now is just nature of the industry. There's a lot of negotiations going on out there. The material pricing is moving quite a bit. So we're seeing that on the submittal side for the GC, it's lagging a little bit, but we're getting a lot of the important things that we need to as well in place. Structural steel, finishes, things like that. But we are going back and forth with them on some of, some longer lead items like the pump house, pre-manufactured building. We've been going back and forth with them on that. But overall, we're moving ahead with the GC on the submittal process. The rest of the trades are doing fairly well on the submittal process as far as anything long lead or critical path. Schedule, you know, we're, you know, we're moving. Right now, the goal is by the end of June that we're, you know, in the buildings, starting, you know, demolition. We have already started earth on the outside. You guys will see that we're moving dirt on the fields. So that's a good thing, and the idea there is to try to have an end goal of having the fields in place, the first set of fields in place, you know, by the end of August. So it's, it's tight, but we're positive, and, you know, we're doing all the right things to try to push that along. You know, this really talks about what we're doing every, you know, every week. We have meetings every Monday. The first thing on our agenda, we review safety, super important. So that's the first thing on our agenda. The district and Tetra Tech are, you know, are involved. And, you know, we just had our first onsite meeting, which I think is pretty important. When you, when you look at construction meetings, they're hard to have via a Zoom meeting, and we've been having them via Zoom. So this Monday was our first in-person construction meeting, which is, which is really important. You know, just, it really, you can get a flavor for the person, the person sitting there looking at you. You can really talk very factual. It's hard to deal with contractors over Zoom. It's not taken as seriously. So we've started in-person meetings, and they will continue to be in-person meetings now from now on. And we have coordination meetings that are continuing. We've had them prior to this onsite 24th. We had one today. After, after yesterday's meeting, we had another one today. Onsite coordination meetings are really important.
And I would like to add to that, that we will be meeting after Monday with onsite construction managers and the district, so that if there's anything that we need to report either to the buildings or to the board, and anything that we need to do on our end to keep everything moving, we are in constant contact. That's in addition to the meetings that we have every other week, where we really go through not just this phase, but all of the different work that we have going on.
Yeah, thanks, Sandra. And that's, yeah, no, that's important to say, because we also have, on top of that, every Friday, TPG has a meeting with the architect to, it's almost like a regroup meeting, and we've been doing this since the beginning of the project. It's a regroup of the week to make sure that we're really on point for the contractor meeting. So we're having, at a minimum, we're having two meetings a week just to, you know, to deal with contractors. Then we have our coordination meetings, and then we also have our district meetings. So we're really, you know, we're doing, we're doing a lot to make sure that everyone's on point, everyone's informed. So, you know, right now, I think we're doing all the right things, you know, especially in this crazy market that we're involved in. Number two.
And to Lou, and to, just for a second, Lou, and to Sandra, because this is important. As the work starts and continues, you know, there are going to be things that happen, and you come across. If for some reason there's any questions or some concerns that the board may have, please make sure that goes through Sandra. Sandra will be in concert with Lou and then can update the entire board. We know that people like to talk, and there'll be people up there, and things will happen, and then reports will be mentioned by others. Did you hear about this? Did you hear about that? Questions or concerns come up, they go through Sandra. Sandra will have the conversation with Lou, and then she'll report back to the board. It's really, really important. The same thing with being up there and about, really shouldn't be at any point in time. If questions then come up, have to go through Sandra. We just want to make sure that we are following that chain of command, because it's very, very important. So, so again, we know that things will happen along the way, and we know that there are people that like to report back about things happening, you know, and they're up there on or about. Please make sure those questions are directed at Sandra. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Anthony, that's a great point. I think, I have to say that regularly at our contractor meetings, first and foremost, we, of course, we talk about safety, but the other big thing we talk about on a regular basis is communication. We want to make sure that everything is going through the right channels. We would appreciate, of course, all board members, administration, anyone that has an issue or a concern about what may be happening onsite, the funnel should go through Sandra, and then Sandra can come back to my team, and we can address it. And what it does, it just helps us control all of the, you know, the issues, and we can mark, you know, we have a regular spreadsheet. I have my guys make sure they have a spreadsheet of any issues that are ongoing onsite. But if there's something specific with the community, board members, administration, students, what we want to make sure is that it goes through Sandra, and right away, we can, you know, document and address it as opposed to us hearing it from a contractor. We don't want to hear it from a contractor. We don't, you know, it's third-party news. We don't want to do that. We want to hear it right from the district, and that's, that's the voice that we listen to, and that's, you know, so it's, it's super important.
Right, and it's also important, when you have any concerns or questions, not going directly to contractors or talking to them while they're working. Again, that's why we're making the point of contact to be the construction manager, and that's where the contractors will go, and then in school district administrative, that type of stuff, I'll be the contact person, and we'll make sure that everyone is getting the same message, and we're not, again, that hearsay can cause us significant problems. And contractors, once we open that door, we set ourselves up for more problems.
Can I make, can I have, can I make a suggestion? Am I muted?
Nope, you're on, you're on.
Can I make a suggestion? We do have, we have new board members to the school board. I think, you know, one of the, one of the charges of the school board is that we should be, you know, we should be in the buildings at least once a year. This might be a very, very appropriate time to organize a meeting of the school board with some of the, with some of our team, and to take us through, so there's no, there's no room for any interpretation. Take us through the project, take us into the classrooms that are going to be renovated, take us through all that stuff. This way, you know, the curiosity is kind of, all right, you know, we've already gone through that. I would offer that up as a nice, as a nice solution to get everybody on the, on the school board on the same page, because, you know, we've been doing this, I mean, this is my fifth year, finishing up my fifth year on the school board. So we've been going at this since I've been on the board with the, with the building evaluations and Tetra Tech and so on. So Sandra, I would submit that, that we should organize a meeting of the school board onsite to take us through just what, just what the plan is, what's going on, and I think that's probably a very good way for everyone to get that information and actually see it.
Yes, and we have spoken about that.
That's a great point. Yeah, we could set that up. I'm actually going to do that for the public. I'm going to do a spotlight and actually do exactly that.
And we talked about it too, as an administrative team, that we would be doing walkthroughs. So we'll be setting up different times for the board to meet, you know, with us, you know, so that there are multitude, you know, numerous times, so we can have small groups, we can go through, we can give some individualized attention, and make sure that everyone gets a chance to go through and walk through the project. So we have been talking about doing that, and not just a one-time type of thing. We will do that as the project moves along.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a great idea, and it shows a great before and after as well. I mean, to appreciate the final product you walked through now.
Absolutely, Lou. Yep.
So Lou, maybe what you could do with Sandra and Kevin is kind of scope out when they're going to start doing that interior work, and we can do it sooner than later, and let's set some dates to Melody, and then let's get that on the calendar, so we can do it both June, you know, July and August as we're making progress.
Absolutely. We can do that. No problem. Yep.
Thank you, thank you.
So we, Sandra, we can move on to the next slide. So this really talks about schedule, and again, this is, we're at 10,000 feet. You know, Piazza, we're just walking through each one of the guys. Piazza is working on submittals. So Piazza is not working in the building at this point in time. They're strictly working on submittals, and what we're trying to do is drive them to submit product to make sure they can hit their, hit their schedule. So our goal with Piazza right now is working on their submittal and approval process. The plumbing contractor, SNL, same thing, working on submittals, really pushing on them. They're not working onsite yet. The mechanical contractor, MDS, the big thing there, they, they have a significant mechanical scope of work. And as everyone knows, with COVID, it's become such a scrutinized area is your, you know, your HVAC, your air, your natural air flow in the classrooms, and it's going to be a focus when, when the kids come back in September. So our big focus with MDS has been to make sure that we get materials onsite. And so they have actually submitted on all the major materials that are required. We do have materials delivery schedules, and, you know, we're actually in a very good spot with the HVAC as far as schedule, because we were trying to hit, hit the curve, you know, prior to it getting really crazy. So that was a big focus of ours. On the electrical side, we have Fanshawe Electric. They've already mobilized. We've been working second shift with Fanshawe. Per the schedule that was bid, we had them working second shift to work on the fire alarm systems. So they're already mobilized, and in parallel with the fire alarm systems, they're already now really getting in tune to the sub-panel replacement project, which is a big scope of work for them as well. So they're really getting up to speed on what's required. They're doing a really good job right now. And again, we've been working second shift since the beginning of May, and, you know, just talking about running fire alarm strobes, everything else, first, second floor. Hazards materials, we're actually looking to start work this weekend. And, you know, it's, everything, when you look at the mechanical scopes of work, it's hazmat that's associated with your existing HVAC system. So that's what really Plains Environmental is going to be doing. So we're looking to mobilize them this coming weekend and really start getting them going. And it's holiday weekend, but we're looking to get them going. We bid out, as your casework contractors, separate contractor, it was close to $1 million. We thought it was a good thing to do, because not only of the markup, but because of just controlling that, that prime. A casework prime is a big prime. So we awarded that to Tri-State Contract. Right off the bat, we found out that epoxy, there was epoxy, the epoxy products, they were coming out of Texas, and we were finding that we would not have that product until late August, early September. So we went with a substitution of a phenolic product that has just a little bit lower of a combustion point than the epoxy does. And that's really, when they look at, you know, when you look at products in your chemistry rooms and whatnot, it's, it has to do with what it can withstand as far as your chemistry projects, and also heat. So the phenolic is, is an accepted product industry standard, and it's something that we're looking to have that in prior to the end of August, and it meets our schedule. So we're working on that right now. On the site work side, Landscapes Unlimited, they've already mobilized, and again, they're moving. The one thing that we're working on with them right now, and I've made it a critical path item, is the stormwater structures. They have not been approved yet, and, you know, I'm really pushing to get those approved, so that we have those onsite. You know, that's, that's a critical path when it comes to these athletic fields is the stormwater. And then we have, as far as your synthetic, we have ATURF. They have submitted preliminary drawings. We've gone back and forth with the AD on the striping that's required. There's a lot of field markings between all of the different functions. So majority has come back approved, so we feel pretty good about that product as well. Key dates for construction, high school field work begin on May 19th, which we have. Electrical contractors working second shift right now, asbestos abatement. We have the fan rooms, which I stated, we want to start those as soon as possible. And then, you know, the rest of the trades are really just waiting, you know, they, they can't, they can't get onsite until school's out. Safety, I think what, you know, we can't talk enough about safety. We, we talk about the, all the protocols, and they constantly change. As students and staff start coming back and play, the contractors need to understand that just because of COVID and not a lot of activity, that doesn't mean that kids aren't going to be here, staff aren't going to be here. So that's a big deal. And also just keeping, you know, all the guys separated. We, we are working second shift with the electrical contractors. My guys are making sure that the contractors are abiding by all of the requirements, wearing ID badges, whatnot. We do have full-time supervision, so even though we are working second shift, I have a second, Joe Piper is working second shift at this point until we are able to, you know, open up. So Kevin's first shift, Joe's second shift. And again, all communications through, through the CM, all the contractors are required to communicate with us, not with administration, students, staff. And then, as we stated earlier, if, if the board has any issues, the community has any issues, they really should voice any concerns through Sandra.
Okay, that's the end of the presentation. We'll open it up to any questions.
No, no pictures, because we haven't really done any work yet.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. The abatement that you listed there by Plains Environmental, what school is that being done to?
That's at the high school.
And that's going to start this Friday evening?
That was our goal. So what we have is, when you look at, there's classrooms that have, they're called, they're called fan rooms. And, and the idea is to get into the fan rooms and abate during the weekend, and have clearances by Sunday and safe access by Monday. So it's minor work, it's considered minor work by the Department of Labor. We've made sure we got a clearance from them to consider it minor work, which means we can get in and out with a shorter period of time for clearances.
So your second shift starts at what time? Two o'clock, three o'clock?
Our second shift right now has been starting, starting at three, three to, three to 11.
So we need to make sure that, I'm assuming that there's no staff in the building at that time, just for safety precautions?
Your custodial staff will still be in the building.
While the abatement's being done of asbestos?
Well, so no. So what, what happens is the, the first part of what we do is prep, right? So the actual abatement is going to happen when nobody's in the building.
Okay.
But the first part of it is just setting up containment, so that when you, when we talk Friday, and I'm talking, that's just setting up all the barriers, setting up negative airs. What we also do is take.
And we're making sure that no one goes into the building, then I'll bet there's no one there, correct?
Correct. And, and, and by the way, we're not all over the building. We're in very specific spots. So the idea is, when you look across the building, there's 20 locations where there's fan rooms. What we're looking What we're looking to do is every weekend, take two or three of those client, two, two or three of those fan rooms, abate it and be done cleared. So that what happens is when school is out, the HVAC contractor can go in and demo those units without it being an abatement project. So by the end of June, we're looking to have, we don't have to have all of them done. We just, we just want to be ahead of the mechanical contractor. So we want to be, you know, say 10 units ahead. If there's 20 units, we want to be halfway there at least. So they, they have work to do as opposed to waiting for an abatement contractor.
So that means it's going to happen every weekend and it's not just this weekend. So that's what your plan is? It's going to happen every Friday through Saturday, Sunday?
Our idea is to, as many weekends as possible to, to do this, yes.
So, but we usually don't have Mondays off. So how would that work be done in time for clearance? So when students and staff come back on Monday?
The clearance would be on a, on a Sunday. The clearance, so even this weekend, even though you're not here on Monday, it would be ready for a Monday. The clearances are already going to be there. So. It's called, it's called a small, it's called a small project. So we have a variance for it to be a small project. So when you look at the waiting time, we're cut in half. So we're, you know.
It's, Lou, if I may, it's just to further clarify, the containment zone is basically you put up the plastic zipper walls, negative air. So it's, it's literally isolated to that one location and extracted that way. And then the certification process comes from who? That is clean air in the building that is certified.
There's, yeah, the certification comes where there's, there's two testing labs. The one, the ones that we send them down to are in Manhattan. And we usually get a turnaround, you know, in, in two hours on that certification, you know.
That gets posted and so everybody's aware that it's all good and.
It's clean. We have, the district has Quest as an independent monitoring company. So Quest will, will be there monitoring the air. And they will also be taking samples and they will deliver those samples down to Manhattan and get them back to us for clearances. So, you know, I guess if, if you were to look at it, worst case would be, there would be a classroom if there, and again, what I'm talking about are muddied joints. So in each classroom, when you look at the units that are in a closet, there's muddied joints there. The muddied joints have to be abated. This is pretty standard practice. I've never really failed on a, a muddied joint issue. But that's what we're dealing with. We're not talking about major asbestos abatement. It's just, you know, it's getting the joints clean.
Everybody wondered, you know, it's, you hear asbestos and people.
Exactly.
I understand. Yeah, it's, yeah, we're not, yeah, we're not talking about major projects here. We're talking about muddied joints. It's, it's, it's really insulation that's already there. And, and, you know, what's going to happen is we remove that insulation, it's going to be a clean pipe so that the mechanical contractor can, you know, can demo it. Yeah.
Lou, just remember, our track record when we've done this stuff in the past has been very good. So just keep that in the, keep that in the memory bank over there, okay?
You know, I gotta keep getting reminded. I know, I know. And I appreciate you guys, guys keep reminding me. You know, I, I know that there's sensitivity there and we're going to do our best to make sure everything's right. Yep. We'll make sure communication-wise, when we get clearances on Sunday, we'll make sure that Sandra and the team are notified of our clearances before anyone coming back on Monday.
Perfect. I just have one other question. The Monday meetings, the progress meetings you talked about, who are at those meetings?
So that will be the construction manager and myself and the, and Mike Shore and the architect if necessary.
So the construction managers, Lou, right?
No, we have two on site, right? So it'd definitely be Kevin, I assume during the day. So we'll have Kevin Khan.
Okay.
Well, I think, I think Sandra, she's talking about our, our.
Progress meeting.
The contractors meeting. I don't go to the contractor.
No, 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 no. You listed on your PowerPoint, said Monday progress meeting.
We have, so we have, we have two meetings. We have a contractor meeting. And then what we do, so we have contractor meetings that are every Monday. The contractor meeting is Palumbo, Tetra Tech. Mike Shore is representing the owner and then all of the contractors. So that's our, that's our contractor meeting. And then the contractor meeting, our agenda starts with safety. It, it talks to submittals, where we are with still process, RFIs, requests for information. We talk about PCOs, potential change orders. We talk about schedule, project schedule. And then we talk about applications for payment, making sure the contractors, of course, are getting paid. So we document all of those. That's weekly. Every week on Monday, we do that. What we've been doing every other week, we've been having an OACM meeting, which is an owner-architect CM meeting. That really is an executive meeting that talks about where we are. What are, what are all the things we have to do internally to make sure the meeting is, is, is going the right way? Okay? What, what Sandra, so we had our OACM meeting today. What Sandra recommended was that we now move that OACM meeting to back up our contractor meeting. So what we will be doing is on Mondays, having our contractor meeting, we'll back it up with an OACM meeting. On top of that, we've also been having on Fridays, I've been meeting with Tetra Tech. So it's a, just a, it's a TPG and Tetra Tech meeting to talk about what's happened during the week. And really, it's, it's, it's been, you know, how do we deal with our GC? How do, how do we make sure we keep him on point? So we've had a separate Friday meeting to help us for our Monday meetings. So we're, we're, we're doing all, we're doing all the, all the right things that we need to, to make sure that everyone's on point. But, yeah, we're having every single week and, you know, you know, it's, the team is working really well. I gotta say, everyone's doing all the right things, even, even though we have some tough contractors, we're, we're still doing all the right things. So. And, and I gotta, I, I'll be honest with you, I gotta appreciate the support from the district. District's been great. Anthony, Sandra, I mean, amazing, Mike, all the guys, they're, everyone's top-notch. So we're, we're happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just a quick one, Sandra. I don't know if you can speak to it or not. I know we got a smart bond going on and another tech bond going on. Is all that coordinated? We got all that in the works? Is that all kind of?
We're, we're working on getting that final approval for the EPC, getting those documents to Lou so that he can make sure what's, you know, what needs to be coordinated, what's right, what's on, is there extra coordination that needs to be done? So yes, we've been talking about that.
Right. We gotta make sure we, we get those electricians, you know, we don't have two electricians in the same spot doing different things.
Yes, we, we have been, we do. And it always comes up in our, in our own.
It actually came up in our technology meeting as well. So it would be, be good to make sure we get, we're ahead of that. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Lou.
I got one more question. Hold on. So what are those plants behind you, Lou? What are you growing back there? Coppers or tomatoes? What we got going on?
I got, look, I got, yeah, I got, I got a little bit.
There you go.
Coppers, I got tomatoes.
Little garden guy. Now you're, now you're talking, baby.
That's me.
Out of my garden to come to this meeting. So, you know, it's tough.
That's me.
Thank you so much, Lou.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Anything else or we're good?
We're good.
Have a good night.
Yeah, you too. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. President Morgan, back to you. Thank you.
You're muted.
All right. So we have, so what we're going to do right now is I do a motion to go into executive session. And we're, so I'd like to do that right now. Due to the technical limitations, it will not be possible to end the meeting with the virtual public session. Please be advised, the Board of Education will take action. After the executive session, we will resume back into public, other, other to vote. A record of the time, the motions are made and the results, the votes taken will be made by the district clerk, Melaleo Raca, included in the minutes of the meeting. Can I get a, a motion to go into executive session for personnel discussion?
Point of order, Mr. President, should you say why we're going to executive? I don't think you said that.
For, for, I just said for personnel.
Okay, so moved.
Thank you. Tanner, second please. Thank you, Lucy. All in favor? Hi, thank you very much. All right.